We've got to do that first. I'd like to call the Monday, November 4, 2024 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
And may I have a report on the minutes of our October 7 regular session, work session, and executive session, and our October 21 executive session, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, Mayor, I've read the minutes for the meeting, including the regular session, work session, and executive sessions, and upon review, I found them to be complete and correct, and I move that we accept the minutes as written.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor or signifying are saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. Tonight is a very exciting night in the city of Oakwood because we have a new captain that we're going to swear in, and it is Keith Benson, and he is here with his family. His wife Debbie is here, welcome, and their children Macy and Madison. Are they hiding? There they are, there in the front row, great. And Keith, your mother is here, Nancy. Where are you, Nancy? Is that you in the second row? Welcome. And then Jim, and then sister, your sister Lisa, correct? Welcome. And then you've got a brother-in-law Kenny hiding. Okay, so we got the, we got the, you guys are all in the front row. Congratulations. All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to come down in front. We'll have you come up, and our chief Hill wants to say a few words about you, and then I'll administer the oath of office. And, Mike. Long time coming for Captain Benson here, and I'll tell you why, because he had his public safety career in 1995 with the Miami'sburg Police Department, where he served for four years. During his time at Miami'sburg, he served the police department in a variety of assignments. In 1999, Keith made the decision to leave the city of Miami'sburg and join the Oakwood Public Safety Department. During his time as a public safety officer, he served as a field training officer, an evidence technician. He's the last public safety officer who came from the police side to complete paramedic school, and he also was the Oakwood dare officer for several years. In the summer of 2006, Keith was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, where he has served as the crew one supervisor for the past 18 years. As a newly promoted lieutenant, Keith completed the Police Executive Leadership College Training Program and was instrumental in assisting in the development of our department's mission statement in 2008 that remains intact today. Additionally, during Keith's tenure as a crew lieutenant, he has overseen and managed many critical incidents that have occurred throughout the city during his 18 years as a supervisor. Keith is a proud husband to his wife Debbie, cheer dad to his daughters Macy and Madison. He's a Dayton native, a graduate of Carroll High School. Keith has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Kentucky University, a master's degree from Indiana State University, both in criminal justice-related fields. Keith has also served as a part-time faculty member at Sinclair Community College, teaching a variety of criminal justice-related courses, and is now actively involved in the Ohio Law Enforcement Foundation Supervisor and Training Education Program, also called the STEP Program. Keith's promotion today embodies hard work and dedication he has demonstrated throughout his nearly 30-year public safety career. I look forward to working closely with you, Keith, and watching you take on new challenges that comes with accepting a new leadership role within an organization. So please join me in congratulating Captain Benson on his promotion to the rank of captain. If your family wants to come up, they're welcome to do that. Debbie, okay, you'll be changing his badge after we do the oath of office. So if you'd please raise your right hand and repeat after me, "I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Ohio, and will obey the laws thereof, and that I will, in all respects, uphold and enforce the provisions of the Charter and the ordinances of the city, and will faithfully discharge the duties of public safety captain upon which I am about to enter." Congratulations. So I came up here to tell you that next, I'm going to come back down there, and we're going to give the awards out to our Scarecrow Row winners from our Family Fall Festival that we had here several weeks ago. Carol Collins was going to assist me, and we'll start with our third-place winner. That was Skelly de la Cruz Steals Home by the Bazon, did I say that right? Bazon and Beecher Families, and Maria Beecher, I believe, is here to accept the, oh, they're all here. Congratulations. Will you all come down? Creation, Andy Ide. Is Andy here? He is not here. That's right. Well, we will make sure that he gets our meeting, we'll probably give it to him tomorrow. We have a planning commission meeting here, is that Wednesday? I think that's Wednesday. All right. And our first-place winner is The Price is Fright Have Your Pets Sprayed or Neutered by Bill McCarthy, McCarty, Keith Morris, and Andy Jones. Are they here? All three of them are here. Congratulations. Congratulations. And the mayor's award is celebrating 50 beautiful years at Smith Gardens by the Oakwood Beautification Committee, and I believe Ted Kircher is here to accept that award. Here's Ted, congratulations. I'd also like to thank Vice Mayor Byington, who assisted me in the judging, and we had a good time.
It was.
We got to ride around in little golf carts down Schaefer Boulevard. That was, that was, that was a treat. All right. We have some other special visitors here tonight, and it is Jackie Halsel, and Jackie is here to talk about some special guests that she has. If you'd like to come down to the podium, and you could tell us, who are your friends? Yeah, welcome.
Hello, I'm Jackie Halsel, and myself and my husband Howard Cisik, who's here as well, have been hosting two teachers from Bosnia, and this is our second year doing it. And so I'm actually going to turn it over to the director of that program, Miranda Brooks, to tell you a little bit about it.
Thank you, welcome, Miranda.
Hi, good evening. My name's Miranda Brooks. I work for the city of Dayton at the Dayton Mediation Center, Division of the Department of Planning Neighborhoods and Development. I'm the stateside project manager for our Bosnian Youth Leadership Program, which is funded by the U.S. State Department through a cooperative agreement between the city of Dayton and the U.S. Embassy in Sarajevo. This is our sixth cohort of students and teachers from Bosnia and Herzegovina to visit Dayton. So we have 18 students and three teachers, and they come from three cities each year, different cities in Bosnia. This year, those cities are Zenica, Livno, and Berzko district. The Youth Leadership Program is really focused on exploring ideals of democracy, entrepreneurship, conflict intervention, peace building, and volunteerism. And so while the students and teachers are here in Dayton, they have several opportunities through programming to have those experiences. While they are here, they are also working on project ideas for implementation back in their hometowns to help elevate their communities. We actually just came from the downtown library where those final presentations took place. Another aspect of the program is that the students and teachers stay with local host families to experience unique insights into U.S. American life. And as Jackie mentioned, Jackie and Howard are one host family that we have this year, one of 14. And the host family experience truly makes the program a success, and I might do a little plug, so that this is a yearly program, and if anyone is interested in hosting a teacher or a student, I encourage them to contact the Dayton Mediation Center. I'm proud of the program. If you haven't heard about it, I'm happy that I'm able to share it with you all tonight. So thank you very much for the time, and I would like to invite the teachers up to say just a few words, Ermina and Yanya.
Welcome to both of you as well. Welcome to Oakwood.
Hello, good evening all. My name is Yanya Sutic, and I'm an English teacher from Bosnia. I work in vocational high school. As Miranda said, we came here as a part of Youth Leadership Program and as well Teacher Development Program. These past three weeks have been extraordinary. This is my first time to the States, and I really enjoy it, enjoyed it. So I want to thank to my host family, Jacqueline and her husband Howard, for their hospitality. They have been great. We really had a great time, and I think this program is a great opportunity to connect with others and to exchange ideas that can benefit to both of our communities. So thank you very much. It has been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, my name is Ermina Svraka. I'm an English teacher. I'm from Zenica. It's a city in the middle of Bosnia and Herzegovina, which is a country on Balkan. We are kind of, we have kind of a connection with Dayton, very strong, because this is the place where Dayton Agreement was signed and the war was stopped, and it's still alive. We live by that agreement, and this was a unique opportunity to see the place where all started, and we are really grateful for whole experience that we had here, to our host families who welcomed us in their home and gave us a real insight into American life, and to the organizers who organized all the different kinds of activities that we had the opportunities to see. So this is a great opportunity for everyone, and I hope that it will continue in future. Thank you very much.
It's my understanding the Bosnian Peace Accords will be 30th anniversary next year?
Yes, next year. Next year is 30 years.
And your, and your organization has been involved with celebrating the annual?
In a way, in a way, we are.
Okay, all right. Does council have any questions for our guest?
I can only say we apologize for the last three weeks of political ads that you've had to put on. I can't imagine coming to a country and having to.
Well, it's really exciting to see that from this distance.
Citing is one word.
Yeah, because we are watching it usually on TV.
Okay, yes. And Jackie, I would encourage you to take our special guest to Grater's Ice Cream Store before they go back to tomorrow. Well, you can absolutely, you can absolutely do that, and I don't think they close tonight until 10:00, so, but, that's right, that's right. And, you know, if our council meeting gets over, we may join you over there.
Exactly.
Okay, well, thank you very much for attending, and we really appreciate it, and we're happy to have had some small part in those peace accords 30, 30-some years ago. So thank you very much. And we're looking forward to, you know, NATO coming, they're having their meeting here. I believe it's in the spring of 2025, so, yes, we're looking forward to participating in that in any way that we can. But thank you again for coming. Grater's is less than one kilometer away. All right, that can, is there anyone else here for the visitor section that wishes to address city council? This would be your time to come up. This would be, there's one person here would be his opportunity to, you know, come back here after 22 years and tell us what we've been doing wrong, but I guess we don't want to have that person speak yet. Okay, thank you. We'll now go to legislation, and our first legisla, first item on legislation is a resolution, did I find it here? Resolution recognizing Norbert Klopsch. I've had the opportunity to sit next to Norbert for the last 15 years, watching the print in my reports get larger and larger. So without further ado, let me read this resolution that we will ask for a vote of council. Whereas Norbert S. Klopsch will retire, or did retire, on November 1, 2024, after 32 years of loyal and exemplary public service to the city of Oakwood, and whereas prior to becoming city manager in 2002, Norbert S. Klopsch served as the city's first in-house city engineer from 1992 to 2000, subsequently advancing to become the Director of Engineering and Public Works for two years. Whereas in addition to his duties as city manager, during portions of his tenure, Norbert S. Klopsch assumed all responsibilities associated with the positions of Director of Engineering and Public Works, a measure taken to mitigate and navigate the negative impact the repealed Ohio estate tax had on city revenue. And whereas during Norbert's 22-year tenure, Norbert's direct involvement and leadership propelled the city of Oakwood to take on many significant initiatives and projects. The most notable accomplishments evidencing his vision and better city betterment include completion of the Shroya Road reconstruction project that positively impacted the residents living on the one-mile stretch of Shroya Road and the 15,000-plus-or-minus daily users of the roadway. Redevelopment of the former sugar camp, NCR Sugar Camp facility, into the home of the Sugar Camp Professional Office Complex and Beth Abraham Synagogue, and the creation of the Point Oakwood Residential Neighborhood. Enlargement and reconstruction of the City Administration and Public Safety Building, which modernized facilities and improved the efficiency and functionality of the building. Construction of the Krieger Field Dog Park, Judith A. Cook Memorial Park, the Oakwood Community Center parking lot, the recycling and yard waste drop-off facility, and the major renovations and improvements to Schaefer, Orchardly, and Fair Ridge Parks, Halk Stream, and both business districts. And whereas through the COVID 2019 pandemic, Norbert guided the city of Oakwood with resilience and decisiveness, ensuring effective response measures were being implemented to protect the health and well-being of the residents and essential services continued to operate smoothly. His proactive approach and compassionate leadership navigated the city of Oakwood through one of its most challenging times. Whereas the, whereas city managers throughout and beyond the Miami Valley hold Norbert in high regard for his leadership, commitment, and management style, Norbert's standing has enhanced the prestige and reputation of our city. And whereas throughout Norbert's distinguished career, Norbert served Oakwood with an unmatched sense of duty and personal integrity, and represented Oakwood with both the highest degree of professionalism regarding his job as both a vocation and an advocacy. And whereas Norbert possessed a keen understanding of what makes Oakwood a very special community, and was guided by that understanding in all of his actions and decision-making. And whereas Norbert will be forever remembered as a city manager who genuinely cared for all of the Oakwood community, his dedication to service, emboldened by his strong work ethic, deep understanding of governmental issues, and ability to apply calm and reasoned judgment, even in those most challenging situations. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Oakwood, Montgomery County, Ohio. Section 1, the council of the city of Oakwood accords very special public recognition of Norbert S. Klopsch for his 32 years of outstanding public service to the city of Oakwood. Section 2, on behalf of all Oakwood residents and businesses and members of the city staff, past and present, city council expresses sincere thanks to Norbert S. Klopsch for his many contributions to the Oakwood community, contributions that can be seen readily throughout the city and will remain as a longstanding testament of, to his public service. This was passed by city, well, it will be passed as soon as I make this motion to approve this resolution, and would ask Vice Mayor Byington for a second.
Second.
Any other questions about this resolution? Lori, would you please call the roll for the record?
Mayor Duncan?
Absolutely, yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
What he said.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
And I have a copy of the resolution, and in Norbert's style, it's on legal paper as opposed to letter-size paper. If you'd like to come up to the dais, I'll come out and present it to you along with another special gift. I try to keep it to half an hour. I felt kind of weird sitting back there, but you looked great up there, Katie. Jeez, I mean, I, you know, born and raised in Northern California, college in New York, army at Fort Campbell, and then Southwest Ohio, and 32 years ago, I walked in this building. It was quite a bit different back in the day, but one thing that wasn't different is the front door here, and I kind of remember when I first walked in that door, but it's hard to believe that 32 years have passed, and I'll just briefly say that I've used the, you know, word bittersweet and blessed many times the last four to six weeks, and I'll just use it again tonight. Everything runs its course, and, you know, my career here has run its course, and that's sweet, but it's bitter in the sense that I'm going to miss what I've done here for so long, and in particular, all the people I've had the privilege of working with, and I miss them very, very much. I'm blessed in that, you know, you could not find a better community to serve and to work for and to live in than Oakwood. You know our history, and, you know, when we were the town of Oakwood in the late 1800s, you know, I think the original folks that came here, they wanted to create a special place, and they did, and became a village in 1908, a city in 1931, and our elected officials, where the leadership begins, have been, you know, top shelf from over all the decades, and our staff has been, and I remember, you know, when Mike Kelly retired, thinking that, you know, Oakwood had a heck of a lot of great momentum in the right direction, and it was my job to just keep things going in the, in that right direction, and, you know, by most every measure, you know, we are one outstanding community here, and I'm very, very, very confident that Oakwood will stay that way. So thank you, Mayor and council, and those who preceded you, and my dear wife, who allowed me to, you know, vent many times that night when I came home frustrated about this or that, but, and staff, Carol, Alan, Rob, Lori, and those that aren't here, it took all of us to do what we do here and work together, and I've thoroughly enjoyed it, and I will miss it, but I'm down at 200 block of Volusia, as you know, Katie, and I will treasure watching the city continue to thrive over the years to come, so thank you very much. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our retired city manager? I'm going to rake the backyard. Beyond, I haven't gotten my list.
You know where to put the leaves, right? No pumpkins.
Right, no pumpkins, only leaves, so I've got a laundry list, but thoroughly enjoy it. Anyone else? Okay, I'd like to point out for the folks watching here at home, on Thursday, this Thursday, from 4:30 to 7:00, I believe it is, we're having, 4:00 to 7:00, we're having an open house at the OCC where you can come and greet Norbert and wish him best wishes on his future endeavors, and we'll have a brief presentation again at 5:30. So there's a lot of elected officials from around town want to come by and welcome, wish you well as well, so look forward to seeing you on Thursday afternoon. We also have one piece of legislation that Mr. Stevens would like to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. An ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oakwood Traffic and General Offenses Codes. Each year, we pass an annual housekeeping ordinance to align our local traffic and general offenses codes with changes that have been made at the state level. This ordinance will adopt our 2024 replacement pages for the traffic code and the general offenses code. This is the first reading of this ordinance. The second reading will play, will take place at our December meeting. Since this is our first reading, I make no motion at this time.
Thank you very much, and I guess we will, that concludes our legislation, so we'll now have a staff report from our Leisure Services Director, Carol Collins.
Good evening, Mayor Duncan, and members of Oakwood City Council. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to share a lot of the activities and to share a lot of the activities and programs that the OCC and the Department of Leisure Services has had throughout the last several months. First, I thought I would bring up the pool. As I think most of you know, that we had a major expenditure at the pool with the new pool liner and some other expenses that were associated with the installation of the liner. And the cost of that was a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. It proved to be very beneficial this year. And I think, as you can see, the color of the pool and all of the additions that we've made over the years has been just a great improvement for Gardner Pool. As far as memberships go, we had five hundred and forty-six family memberships, seventy-seven single memberships, and a hundred and twenty-three senior memberships at the pool this year. Total membership for two thousand and twenty-three were seven hundred and twelve versus seven hundred and forty-six for two thousand and twenty-four. We're very happy that it continues to increase in membership. And I think the improvements that we have made have definitely made an increase in our membership. As far as some of the activities at the pool, we had two hundred and fifteen participants in swim lessons this year. The dolphin swim team had a hundred and ninety-eight participants, and they did very well as far as their swim meets were concerned. Water aerobics and deep water workout had eighty-seven participants. And then, as you can see, the revenue from membership and all of the other revenue was an increase this past year. And of course, at the end of the season, we had the Fourteenth Annual Dog Splash. We had forty dogs that came and swam at Gardner Pool on Sunday, September the eighth. And it was always a big, big community event for the dogs that we have in the community and the pool membership. Going forward, we had the Family Fall Festival, which was held on Sunday, October the thirteenth. We had hayrides that went down Scarecrow Row, which was on Schaefer Boulevard. And it included the costume parade and lots of games and activities. And the Oakwood High School Band participated as well. It was a very fun family day. It was a beautiful day for the Family Fall Festival as well as Scarecrow Row. These are just a few of the pictures of the twenty-five participants that we had in Scarecrow Row this year. Moving right along, we'll talk about the Johnny Appleseed Street Tree Project. This year, we are now taking applications for the Johnny Appleseed Project. The deadline for applications would be Sunday, November the tenth. And right now, we have probably fifty trees that we have sold. But we know that there's a number of other applications that are due to come in yet this week. We have planted through Johnny Appleseed, three thousand three hundred and twenty-three trees, which I think is a great commitment to the urban forestry program that we have within the city. This was the forty-second year that we received the Tree City USA Award, which was held in Tip City on April the nineteenth. And we're very proud of the fact that we are a Tree City USA and we're number two in the state of Ohio as far as being a Tree City USA with the forty-two years. The trees that we're offering this year are the Swamp White Oak, which is a favorite. The Skyline Honey Locust, we've not offered a Honey Locust for a number of years, but it has a lot of good characteristics. And I think it will be one of those that we'll see just a different shape of trees within the community. And I would say that out of all of the five trees that we're offering, four of them are native trees. The Green Mountain Sugar Maple is one, and we have a number of those in the community right now. And they have an absolutely beautiful fall color, which has been evident this year. And the Black Gum is another native tree. And it's a smaller tree, but the fall color on the Black Gum is significant. But it also has a beautiful shape, and we've not offered it very often. But it has become a very popular native tree to offer. And then the last tree we're offering is the Greenspire Little Leaf Linden. All of the trees that we plant this year will be two inches in diameter. And then we had celebrated the fifty years of the city of Oakwood receiving Smith Gardens from the Carlton Smith Family. So on August the eighteenth, we had a community event that was held both at the Gardens and at the OCC. It wasn't the greatest of days, but the day was very significant for Smith Gardens. And I think you can see by the pictures, we had a group from Columbus that had a falconry group. And they were at the Gardens for about an hour and a half and demonstrated a lot of the different birds that they offer and gave the characteristics. It was, I think, a great program for us to offer. The other thing that we had in the middle upper picture was a sculpture that was done by Michael Bashaw. And that still remains and will be taken down probably within the next couple of weeks. But it had chime significance. And every once in a while, you know, you could hear the chimes clear up to Harman School. And it was just a really nice piece that Michael did, and he was very proud of it. The only problem that we had was we weren't able to share it during the activity that we had on the eighteenth of August. And then the last thing, the Friends of Smith Gardens is having a Holiday Festival of Trees Auction, which will be held on Friday, November the fifteenth. Right now, we have thirty, thirty-five trees that will be auctioned off that night. It'll be a silent auction. It's open to the public, and we encourage people to come and participate in this event. All proceeds from this event will go towards the maintenance and care of Smith Gardens. So we're very excited to have that event take place. And then to finish the year, we have Breakfast with Santa. And that will be on Saturday, December the seventh. And then the big community event will be Lighting Up of Oakwood and the Holiday of Lights, which will be Sunday, December the eighth, beginning at six thirty at Schaefer Park. And luminarias are now on sale at the OCC for six dollars a dozen. And the beautification committee puts out about twenty-five hundred to three thousand luminarias every year along Schaefer Boulevard, Far Hills, and other areas around the city. So it's just a beautiful, magical night, which I think, I know I'm always looking forward to. And then we have an activity at the OCC with Gingerbread House Decorating on December the tenth. And to finalize the December activities, we have the Candy Cane Hunt, which is open to the public. And it's a free event, and that will be held at Schaefer Park. So with that, that's the end of my comments. And if you have any comments that you would like to ask or questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Carol?
Do you know how many trees are actually in Oakwood?
There's approximately nine thousand.
Really? Okay, I didn't know if you counted them or not.
And that's just, that's just street trees and park trees. That doesn't include any of the trees on private property.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment to thank Carol and her staff for all the consistency and all these programs keep going and, you know, they're very creative with these festivals and different things they do, but to keep them running the same way, just tweaking them here and there. And it shows by all the attendance and people still, you know, come and force them. Christmas will be packed, lighting of Oakwood and the Fall Festival, Scarecrow Row, you know, twenty-five every year. That's a lot, takes a lot of time for people to do that. So thank you to you and your staff for all the hard work you guys do.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Carol. We appreciate it very much.
Okay. We have a new city manager, Katie Smitty. And she started a couple of weeks ago and had a nice transition period with Norb and became the official city manager on November one. You are now the sixth city manager going back to nineteen thirty-one. And it's now time for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Planning and zoning manager Ethan Kroger reports that the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting on Thursday, November has been canceled due to a lack of agenda items. The next regularly scheduled meeting is at four thirty on Thursday. I'd like to extend happy birthday wishes to the following City of Oakwood employees in the month of November. On November third, we have Kristen Upton Hazlitt. We also have Natalie Lori and Jennifer Anderson. Then we have Christopher Branscombe on eleven fourteen. Have Thomas Long on November fourth. We have Jacob Here Sarkesian on eleven nineteen. Danford Grow on November twenty-seventh. Thomas Long on November fourth. Cindy Stafford on eleven sixteen. So happy birthday to all of you. Reminder that city offices will be closed on Monday, November eleventh, in honor of Veterans Day. Crash pickup for all routes the week of November eleventh will be one day later than usual. Lastly, I wanted to send a heartfelt thanks to the previous city manager, Norb. Although we only had two weeks together, the amount of knowledge that you passed on to me, I'm still swimming in all of it. But I do want to say thank you for all the meetings that you set up. It was really important that we had the time to sit and meet with all of our critical city partners. And it would have taken me, in addition to the day-to-day, but it would have taken me at least a month or two to meet with all those individuals. So thank you so much. And to your point of Oakwood being a very special place, I truly believe that that's a direct result of your guidance and how you've worked so long. So I am pleasantly happy to say that I'm hoping to fill your big shoes moving forward. So thank you for all you've done to make this transition as seamless. My report.
Any questions for our city manager? We told her we'd be nice to her for her first meeting. But I appreciate, I think there's a Star Trek reference here, Vulcan Mind Meld. Is that what happened to you? Live long and prosper.
Yeah.
Yeah, drinking from a fire hose, that's also appropriate. Thank you for that report. We will now go to council comments and Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mayor. As we're all aware, tomorrow is Election Day. And I encourage you to think of it as a day of celebrating, celebrating democracy and civic engagement. And that's why I'm sporting my red, white, and blue outfit right now. Voting is a responsibility that we all share as citizens, and it's our opportunity to express our opinions and influence the direction of our government. So please exercise your privilege to vote. I also want to acknowledge that several Oakwood residents are seeking election or reelection. And I express appreciation for their willingness to commit to a campaign. It's a lot of work, we all know that. I also want to extend thanks to the poll workers who dedicate their time to ensure a smooth voting process. And again, especially to the Oakwood residents who serve in this capacity. It's very rewarding as a member of council to know that so many of our Oakwood residents are fully engaged in our democratic process. So thank you to all of them.
Thank you. Councilmember Turbin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Well, first, I'd like to welcome Katie to her very first council meeting. We're so glad you're here. And I know we're all looking forward to sharing everything that we have in Oakwood that we know that you'll enjoy. And one of that, one of those things is Halloween in Oakwood. I hope everyone had a safe and happy Halloween. I know I've said this before, and I'll say it again. I mean, nobody does Halloween like Oakwood. And if you doubt that, just look at the decorations, the supersized decorations and the haunted houses and the cotton candy. Candy, I passed out five hundred fun-sized candy bars on Schaefer, five hundred. And everyone was really polite and happy and respectful and thankful. So again, nobody does Halloween like Oakwood. And it was truly a fun and welcoming event.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate Captain Benson. I've actually known Keith a long time, even prior to me being on City Council. And he is the epitome of professionalism and dedication. And I think this promotion is very well deserved. And I'm excited to see how he can help lead our public safety officers who are their next chapter. Congratulations to Captain Benson.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington?
I will start by saying, you know, in light of what Carol mentioned about OCC and programs that they do today, my wife and I participated in the CPR training that is offered there at the OCC. Lieutenant Baggett gave us his knowledge. It was absolutely fascinating the entire time. I mean, took the class probably twenty-five years ago and how much I forgot. So I highly encourage folks, if they get an opportunity to take that class, it's very well worth it. One of the things that we're very fortunate here in Oakwood is that if you have an emergency call, you're going to have a public safety officer there probably within thirty seconds, two minutes. But even Lieutenant Baggett mentioned that if you have a cardiac event, every minute you have a ten percent reduction in the likelihood of survival. So the quicker you can start that, those CPR compression, the better. We take advantage of our public safety officers, but, you know, we have an opportunity to train ourselves and get the knowledge. So I highly encourage folks to take the class. And then, as I always talk about, the night before the election, you know, it is an important election. It is something that, as I was joking with the folks from Bosnia, it has been disappointing in the level of animosity and determination that has been out there. But the one thing that I always feel comfortable in is that our Oakwood residents can see through a lot of that stuff, that they understand that it's more about understanding where the issues are, doing their homework and not really just taking in what the media is going to us. So I do highly encourage folks to do their homework, figure out what things that are important to them. The other thing I will add to that, though, is that, you know, elections are one portion of the process. But I encourage everybody to follow up, you know, when the candidate, whoever that candidate is, wins, make sure that you're following how they actually do their job. Because too often, we have elections and people just get into that position and then we forget about it for the next four years or six years, whatever that is. Elections and being a public servant is about governance, about doing the hard work of actually governing fellow citizens. So make sure that we hold their feet to the fire, that they are following through with the things they said. And I will reiterate the fact that our poll workers are absolute heroes. The stuff that they have to put up with, my wife did it for several, several years. And the things that they have to put up with, they should have the privilege that you have and the least respectful time to make sure that the process goes. Get out there tomorrow and vote. Poll's open at six thirty, I believe it is. Go all the way to seven thirty.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Byington. Well stated. I'd like to report that one of our former Oakwood City Council members passed away last month, Richard Kilworth. He served one term on Oakwood Council from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and three. In two thousand and two, he was elected Vice Mayor of the city after former Mayor Gretchen Bullock had to resign from the council. Richard, he got an undergraduate degree from Purdue University, and he got his master's, or Master of Laws from Georgia. or Master of Laws from George Washington University, graduated with honors there. He served as a patent attorney pretty much his entire legal career. The firm then was named Kilworth, Gottman, Hagan, and Schaeff, but it's, that firm merged into Dinsmore &amp; Joel, which many of you know is still around today, and they still have a very thriving patent practice. So, I was lucky enough to serve with Richard for about six months, when I, seven months, maybe I joined city council in June of 2003, and then served with him until his term expired in November. And he decided not to run again because his law practice was, I mean, so hard, or not hard, but he had so much work to do, it was hard for him to balance both his work career and his public service. So, I knew him very well. He was obviously extremely thoughtful, and I learned a lot from him. Young punk on the city council. But our next council meeting is going to be on Monday, December 7th, and hopefully the election will be resolved by then. So, we are adjourned.